Good evening. Let me call the Fairfield Board of Education regular meeting of Thursday, April 6th, to order. We are only not expecting Mr. Patton, who's out of state on business, but we do expect two other people present at the start of the meeting is Mrs. Gerber, myself Philip Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitko, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, and Mr. Calabrese. If I could have you stand for the pledge of allegiance and if you would remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You can stay standing if you would. A few days ago, we lost one of our teachers, suddenly passed away, Mrs. Barbara O'Brien, who taught my children at Tomlinson and many other children at Tomlinson, so we should have a moment of silence in her honor for her years of service to us. And at the same time, we've had other town officials who have lost loved ones, Stanton Lesser, our town attorney, lost his father, and Michael Tetrow, our first selectman, lost his father recently. So a moment of silence for all. Thank you. We have a full, sorry, we have a full agenda tonight, including one of the most exciting things that this board does, and that is to recognize achievement of students in a variety of ways. Mrs. Maxon Cannelly happens to have a certain affinity with the Odyssey of the Mind program that she has put a lot of effort into, and so she has invited those participants to come to this meeting and be honored, so let me turn the meeting over to Mrs. Maxon Cannelly.
Thank you so much. I cut it to a page and a half. I promise you this started much longer. Very, very briefly, to those of you, I have a feeling there are very few in the audience who will fit this, who are not familiar with Odyssey of the Mind. It is a creative, collaborative, problem-solving activity available to children from kindergarten right up through college, and it's one I've believed in a great deal that my own children participated in. It represents all the qualities that recent Forbes magazine article listed as being essential to our future graduates. It does so much for our kids, and I want to give, before I even start, a special thanks to the very special parent coaches who recognize the value of this activity for their children and were willing to volunteer, without which this would not be possible. Our first team to be recognized tonight is the team from North Stratfield. They were the recipients of the Jill Riggles Award for getting the top score in their division in the very challenging spontaneous problem, which involves walking into a room and creatively solving either a verbal or hands-on problem for which they have zero advanced warning. And again, they walked in there and walked away with the best score of the day in their division. So if these people could come up, when I, these young children could come up, and I call them, the team members are Ella Judas, third grader, and fourth graders Leo Preuer, April Palmentiero, Charlotte Talbot, Ken Quaid, Nate Jackson, and unfortunately June Ward is not able to join this tonight. She is homesick, but hopefully watching. And they are here with their coaches, yes, you're coming up also, Jen Judas and Angrid Preuer.
Pictures now for each team?
Do we have somebody to take a picture?
Well, I think the parents will want to. Okay, so we'll do a set of pictures after each team is called up. Our second team to be, Dr. Jones and Mr. Dwyer, you might as well hang out. Our second team to be recognized tonight is the team from Stratfield. They received an honorable mention for their overall third-place performance, the result of competition in three categories in their problems division. I'm going to do these introductions a little bit differently. I believe they are in costume, yes? Okay. So will each participant please come up when I say her name? This team personified creativity, also known as the Fairy Bee Emma Heitzman, who was being who was being attacked by the dandelion's copycat, played by Madeline McCusker, and copy copycat, played by Charlotte Heitzman. This battle comes to a head during the Veggieville Household Chores Olympics, emceed by Walter Malone, the watermelon Zoe Banta, where Spirit the Starfruit, played by Helen Hen, and her clumsy sidekick Dream the Carrot, played by Kate Warren, do their work to defend creativity. And the team was coached by the decidedly non-Veggieville residents Scott Banta and Kirsten Baker. Our third team to be recognized tonight is the team from Sherman, a group of seven fourth graders from Ms. Pareta's class. Not only did they tie a certain other team from Fairfield for first place to earn a trip to the World Odyssey of the Mind Competition in Michigan, they also won the Jill Riggles Award for finishing in first place for their spontaneous problem performance. This team of Sabine Brown, Elizabeth Dayton, Abby Dignan, Libby Meehan, and Andrew Seki, Jack Emra and Jack Haran were not able to make it, created The Adventure of Doodle Girl and The Eraser, also known as, audience try to keep up with this, also known as Ayma and Nada Goodman. And finally, our fourth team, and I have to say, I can't believe I'm saying, our fourth team, this is getting exhausting, to be recognized tonight is the team from McKinley, known as the Tootsie Pops Rolls. This team has been together for four years, and after previously being an honorable mention recipient, this year they tied Roger Sherman for first place and will also be traveling to the Memorial Day Weekend Worlds Competition in Michigan, which is a long way from the Parisian setting of their performance with their superhero Paris Girl, a setting for which the team built, and I believe it's here on display or can be brought up, a setting for which the team built a three-foot-tall Eiffel Tower out of coffee stirrers and toothpicks, and a Louvre Pyramid out of bubble wrap and PVC piping. This team is comprised of four fifth graders, Olive Campbell, please come on up, Andrew Fuller, Natalia Graceffa, and Alexa Papa George, one fourth grader, Megan Sokal, and two third graders, Mariela Graceffa and Kayla Hewin. they are here with their coach Suzanne Graceffa and supportive principal Leslie Pearson. And again, thank you so much for those school communities of their support of this program, and if anyone else is interested in getting involved, just let me know. So again, congratulations to all. It was a wonderful season, and we did have other teams from Fairfield competing as well. It was just a wonderful performance, so thank you so much, and again, teams, congratulations.
One of the prizes you get is to stay for the rest of the meeting. Or you can go home. We'll take a brief moment so that they can leave without having too much background noise.
Of course, now I feel like I should change the shirt, but. All right, John, I'm late getting this to you. I have to break this to Jim because he's the policy. So I wrote to him about this. So these were your two questions about the policy of the directory information. This is a practical matter. Your other one was regarding the subcategories. This is what we are, this is what we discussed, this is what we had in our previous. But if you just want to. I actually haven't even had a chance to read it. That is a lot off the presses. Sometimes it goes twice a day, depends on the day, but. Isn't it gorgeous?
Okay, we will continue with our agenda. We do have a number of items on our agenda, so to the extent that you took the superintendent up on her offer to have questions asked during the week, that might help the meeting go along. And so at the moment, we're up to student reports. So Ludlow, who wants to go first?
Hello.
I'm sorry, I confused, I thought John was part of the student reports.
Okay. Hope everyone's having a wonderful evening. To start it off, juniors had their SAT testing yesterday. On Monday, Ludlow had its first blood drive of 2017. This event had a great turnout. Forty-two units of blood were donated, and each unit of blood can save three lives. So overall, Ludlow potentially saved 126 lives on Monday, which was a great turnout. Speech and language pathologist Ms. Libby Kennedy, a teacher at Fairfield-Ludlow, hosted the Best Buddies event to bring students with disabilities and mainstream students together. Last month, AP Gov hosted Senator Murphy for Meet and Greet. AP Gov teacher Ms. Sarah Bassett organized the event so that students were able to ask unauthorized questions, which just means any questions that were on their mind that they wanted answered. Senator Murphy also touched upon the heroin epidemic, taxes, college, and gun control. It was amazing turnout, and the students at Ludlow were very respectful and very grateful for Senator Murphy's time. And lastly, a few weeks ago, senior Charlie Capablo was diagnosed with cancer near his heart and lungs. He's a wonderful student, liked by many of his student peers, and just completed a great season as goalie for the Fairfield Connecticut High School hockey team. He, the official diagnosis is Hodgkin's lymphoma, non-Hodgkin's lymphastic lymphoma, T-cell stage-three cancer. This form of cancer is treatable, but he has to undergo 32 months of chemotherapy. Ludlow students, teachers, members of the community, and basically everywhere else that found out about his condition has came together to show the report and love for his family. So far, Charlie's GoFundMe page has raised $168,000 in just 17 days. His GoFundMe page is trending to 4,500 likes and shares on Facebook, and on April 22nd, everyone is coming together for the Charlie Fights Cancer Game, a fundraiser during Ludlow's varsity lacrosse versus Greenwich game. And if anyone would like to donate to Charlie's GoFundMe page, the link is www.gofundme-charlie-capablo-b-strong. We're all united to help Charlie get through this event, and we're all here to support his family. Thank you, and enjoy your break.
Any questions for our representative from Ludlow? No? What's happening at Ward?
A lot since we last met. We had our blood drive, which was 71 donors, so just like she said, we also had our blood drive, which 71 donors, that's a record for us, so much appreciation to the Red Cross and the Red Cross Club. We had capped for 10th graders and following after that, we also had the SATs during school. We also had something called Save a Life Tour, where all the health classes got a chance to visit this simulation that was put on by the counseling center, where we had to, we had to try to text while driving, so they wanted to show us about the complete dangers of doing such things, so it really opened everyone's eyes to how dangerous it really could be. We also, she talked about the American government classes with Senator Chris Murphy, so we also had the privilege of doing that. Thank you for inviting us, by the way. Our jazz ensemble participated in a competition at Darien while our, we had a town-wide band festival on March 23rd for grades five through 12 at Ward. All senior health classes are transitioning into college by getting visits from Fairfield University students, and they're talking about their experiences and really helping us and answering our questions about transition to college. We also had a community college fair, which was sponsored by all local community colleges, such as Husatonic. Students could stop down and see the colleges, it was really nice to get to talk to them, and if we're unsure, we can really talk to the representatives and find out more information about it. Our library media specialists took a few students to McKinley to read aloud to them, so they really enjoyed seeing all the big kids go and interact, so it was, it was really nice. And we concluded our winter season for sports. Our teams were very successful. We had two state championship teams, girls skiing, which is a co-op team with Ludlow, and the bowling team, which is also a co-op. College acceptances are also starting to roll in. Some kids have already accepted their admissions, so our part's over. We're also looking forward to the upcoming spring, yeah, spring break, so, yeah, that's it.
Any questions for our representative from Ward? Thank you very much. There is a lot happening at our two high schools. Thank you. Now on to public comment at the time of our agenda, that take comments from anybody in the public on the agenda items that are shown. There are a couple of items in here that are for vote, and so you may make a comment at the beginning of the meeting if you wish, or you can wait until at the time it is going to be voted. You can't do both, so choose one or the other at your, at your pleasure. So having said that, who wants to come forward and state your name and address?
My name is Kelly Sokal. I live at 155 York Road. I'm speaking tonight regarding extending McKinley School year to Tuesday, June 20th, to make up for the missed days due to the water contamination. I might be misunderstanding some things that happened, but when the accident occurred, we were told that the state would be contacted to request a waiver regarding having the students make up the missed days. We were also told that the district's schedule is created using 182 days, and since the state legal requirement is 180, we would still meet the threshold for having the students in school. I understood this to mean that the rest of the district would remain at 182, while McKinley would be at 180. What I don't understand is how the rest of the district is no longer scheduled for 182 days, because the calendar states that for the last day for students and teachers is June 13th, and that the first snow days, the first eight snow days will extend the length of the school year, et cetera, et cetera. So using this formula, if we add four snow days and the date for the special election, I don't understand how we don't get to June 20th with five days. So that, I just, I don't know if that needs, I need clarification on that. And finally, I just wanted to add that the accident that caused the school to be closed for two days was not a vacation for the families at McKinley. There were some serious concerns about the safety of everyone in that building at the time of the accident, as well as upon their return. I did have the utmost faith that Mr. Cullen and his team worked very hard to ensure the safety of everyone in the building. However, I have been nothing but disappointed in how everything regarding this accident has been communicated to the McKinley communicated, community from the start. I find it difficult to comprehend how I am communicated to directly to have my child get a good night's sleep and eat a healthy breakfast before a state-mandated test, yet when the water supply was compromised, I first heard about it from a press release posted on the FPS website. When there is an issue that directly affects one school, I would request that new protocols are developed to communicate first with those directly affected as a matter of priority. The rest of the district can be notified through a general public announcement, only after those directly affected have been made aware. We deserve better. The fact that we found out that this change in the extension of the school year, I found out through the agenda. If I didn't take the time to look at the Board of Ed agenda, I wouldn't have known until after the vote, and I just think that's really a disservice to the entire McKinley community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. For those who may not have come before the board for comment, we take comment, we don't answer questions during the public comment period. However, this will be a voting item, and I'm sure the superintendent will be addressing some of the questions around how we got to where we are. Anybody else that wishes to come forward and speak on a topic on our agenda, please come forward. It's on a first-come, first-served basis, whoever gets to the table first, or in your case, second.
Mine is on the overview for the roofing, solar roofing. Is this an adequate time to say that?
Yes.
I have a letter that I wrote to you, but I.
Yeah, you may address us now. This is a first reading, and it'll come up for a vote at the next regular meeting, and you could come back at that time as well.
Then this is the first reading of my first letter. Thank you very much. It's written to you, Chairman Dwyer, and I have copies for the other members.
And again, state your name and address.
My name is Carol Waxman, Fairfield Beach Road, Fairfield. I'm in support of the proposal for the solar roofs at both Fairfield High Schools, and I want to commend Scott Thompson and his energy committee for all the things that they have done to bring us forward. I wish our federal government was quite as good at it. I'm a resident, I am a resident of Fairfield, but not near Ludlow or Ward, and I would hope that the public information would be gained from the residents as to their feelings about the roof. I am also very pleased to see that there will be chargers, because the Board of Finance rejected the charges that were proposed prior to this, and I hope in the future that the staff at the schools will be able to take part in using the chargers. I've noticed that there is a charge for parking. I don't know if there is usually a charge for parking at the high school now, but I do consider that a little bit of haves over the have-nots if there is a charge, so I'm not terribly pleased about that, but that will come in my second letter. I'm sure that you will have something to say about it. Again, I do commend the energy, clean energy. I'm proud of Fairfield having moved ahead with this, and it's a good committee. You should attend some of their meetings, they are very good. The members have their wonderful, wonderful attempts at greening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to come forward and address the board on a topic that's on our agenda? Seeing nobody, we'll move on to the balance of our, of our business. After hiring the superintendent and passing a budget, probably the most important thing we do is review curriculum on a regular basis and hear from our teachers as to what they have in mind for the future. And tonight, the Family Consumer Science Curriculum Presentation, which is our version of first reading, is before us. Dr. Boyce and Ms. Kelleher will be presenting, so please, please come forward. Dr. Jones, do you have any initial comments that you wish to make?
No, I think I'm excited to see it. They showed me a little bit of it, a snippet of it a few weeks ago, and I think you're going to be delighted with what you see.
And we need to move.
Yes.
As we, as we get everything set up, I'd like to introduce the teachers at the table with me. Rachel Kelleher is our liaison for the Family Consumer Science Department, and I have to give Rachel a great deal of credit. She has led the way the last few years in working with the teachers from the middle and the high school in writing and developing this curriculum, and the finished product is excellent. Unfortunately, Rachel has a cold and has laryngitis tonight, so she's brought along two colleagues to help her out with the presentation. She's going to try to answer questions, but she's saving her voice for right now. So helping with the presentation, we have Vicky Hastings and Linda Mushala, so they'll be speaking and working the computer.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to take a moment before we begin to thank you for the opportunity to present our curriculum revisions and to introduce the teachers that have made it happen.
Donna Hubert, Fairfield Ludlow.
Amy DeYoung, Fairfield Ward.
Beth Reynolds, Tomlinson Middle.
Jen Savater, Fairfield Woods Middle.
Michelle Block, Fairfield Woods Middle.
Lori Warfield, Tomlinson Middle.
Kathleen Mason, Fairfield Ward.
Lori Kenton, La Jolla.
Bulldogs.
Go Bulldogs. Okay, thank you. We've been asked to address the reasoning behind the revisions, the revisions themselves, our evaluation methods, and budget implications. So we are Family and Consumer Sciences, and we do believe that everything you need to know, you can learn within our realm. We are composed of three areas: fashion and textiles, human development, and culinary As electives, we play a main role in both NIASK directives and the Fairfield Public School's mission statement that dictate a comprehensive educational program. We have several testimonials, and the first one, Isabel, is going to talk about the knowledge and skills needed to be a successful participant.
I'm going to college next year, so when I'm over there in my dorm or in my own house or something, I'm going to be able to make chicken potlets, just something simple and easy that I can have to eat for dinner.
Emily is going to talk about the knowledge needed in her future life as a responsible citizen raising the next generation. citizen raising the next generation.
Do you know about, like, your future life? Like, you're going to have to know this stuff, like, when you're older, until, like, by learning about it now, is that what you're going to do ahead?
Morgan and Jen will talk about the programs that have helped them become successful participants.
Being in this house has kind of, like, brought me out of my shell, and so, like, all the friends and people that I've met here, they really helped me grow as a person.
No matter what social group you're in, no matter if you play instruments, if you play sports, if you stay at home and play video games, we're all friends, like, nothing separates us here, because we all have the same love for food.
Our specialty is performance-based learning. In this picture here, you're watching middle school students performing accurate measuring of dry ingredients. There is more than one type of learner within Fairfield School's systems, and as potential career paths, we help meet the needs of every student. Of course, not every student, excuse me, will graduate, of course, not every student will choose Family and Consumer Sciences courses as career paths, but all students need life skills. Here are some students talking about the importance of what they learn in our courses.
I am a lot more aware about clothing as made, and when I go to buy things, I'm really careful to see how it's made and if it's made well.
The principles of Culinary 10 are learning how to make your own food and survive, because it's kind of a food wilderness out there, and you don't know what you're doing. So what you need to do is learn how to make a chicken cutlet, learn how to make a marinara sauce, learn how to boil pasta, so eventually you can put all the things that you learned together, and you can feed yourself.
It kind of, like, puts in perspective how much parenting comes with having it. And then a lot of people think it's just, like, cuddling with your baby, but it is a handful, but it's a really good experience to have under your belt.
Revisions were necessary, as it's been 10 years since the last time we looked at our curriculum, and there have been many changes within the school systems. There's a new block schedule at the high schools, and there's been an increase in student population and an increase in student demand for courses. We also looked at current trends, innovations, and technology, and aligned everything with the high school's newly devised academic expectations. I imagine the revision process to be similar for most curriculums. Some research is conducted, visiting some schools, taking a look at what's out there, aligning with new standards that have come up. In addition, we created a skills flow chart where we looked at building skills in a purposeful manner. So in sixth grade, students start with a very basic sewing machine. They progress to seventh grade, and sergers are introduced. In eighth grade, students work with computer technology to program embroidery. Then, when they enter the high school, the industry standard industrial sewing machines are introduced. So here it is, what students will know and be able to do. Within culinary, overall, we increased depth and breadth. We focused on healthier eating. We created more classes, as demand suggested, and we increased skills-based performance assessments. We continue to focus on healthy eating and nutrition. Mark Bittman sums up our philosophy in four simple sentences: Eat real food, not too much, mostly plants, and cook it yourself. So these are skills they've learned, and they created this video themselves, and all of these skills are without recipes. Culinary begins in sixth grade in the middle schools, where we increased skill-based performances. Sixth graders begin with basic knife skills. In seventh grade, we continue to build on those skills, and then in eighth grade, there's increased ingredient flexibility and use of equipment. And here's some middle schoolers, eighth graders, working together to produce and use the skills they've learned throughout the three years. In high school, culinary starts with a Level 10 Introduction to Culinary Arts.
In high school, you need to begin with the Introduction to Culinary Arts. It's a Level 10 course. And that course kind of gets you familiar with the kitchen, so you come in, you learn how the kitchens are organized, you learn some independent cooking skills.
In baking and pastry, this is one example of where we have increased our depth and breadth. This is a newly designed course that we're hoping to incorporate. We've been piloting. In Culinary 10, we were not able to go into such depth. In baking and pastry, here, you can see they can bake the cookies, we can then deal with flooding, with royal icing, and embellishments for holidays. Within the food services, we are working towards joint projects with the two high schools, as seen here, where they prepped, presented, and served a Valentine's Day lunch at the senior center. According to the Culinary Institute of America, 90% of people end up working in the culinary and hospitality field over their lifetime. I just read an article in Bon Appetit, Debbie Harry, of Blondie fame started off at Max's Kansas City before she became famous.
We're focusing on doing what we want to make a career after. So our goal here is to have an authentic restaurant experience. So some students will work in front of houses, they'll be waiting tables, they'll be taking money, answering emails. Some students are cooking, some people are doing dishes.
My name is Tom Quinn. I graduated from Fairfield Ward in 2014. I was a part of our list for my junior and senior year. It was a really great experience, because it let me choose my industry and let me actually try out the industry while still having a stipend of being in class. Now I have my associates from Johnson Wales in baking and pastry, who work on Bachelors in Management, and I actually work for the university as part of our Culinary Missions Department, where I'm the manager.
Okay. Within the human development arena, again, overall, we realigned with educational requirements, academic expectations, and recommendations at state and national levels, and there's a lot of formatting for clarity. Human development begins in your sophomore year in the high school with child development, and this was updated with the latest research.
About emotional maturity, which is when you can consistently put someone else's needs before your own.
I had a baby the other night, and it was an interesting experience, but it was fun and it was not fun at the same time. It was fun to have a baby doll that was alive and tend to its needs, but tending to its needs was also difficult, and it was good, because it showed me that having a baby gives a lot of responsibility, and it takes away from your social life and your ability to do schoolwork, and he was a lot of sleep. So it's definitely, it's fantastic.
Early childhood education, we've increased performance-based assessments.
Child development is kind of an entry-level course, you can take it as a sophomore. Then there is once you complete it back, you can take early childhood education, whereas you have an opportunity to be a student teacher in a fully functioning preschool, where we have three-year-olds and four-year-olds in the community.
The CAPS Stone course within human development is Individual and Family Development, a course that's run in coordination with the University of Connecticut. And upon successful completion, you earn three transferable college credits. Child-based career opportunities abound and are on the increase. A background in this field opens the doors to careers in psychology, toy development, writing of children's books, and teaching. Chrissy Iona, a former student at Fairfield Ludlow High School, who is now a third-grade teacher at Roger Sherman, has this to say about our program. Oops, just started again. That's okay. Just go up to the arrow. Yep, it started, yeah.
So now, looking back on high school and this course that I took all, like, the three years that I was doing child development, I realize that being able to make a lesson plan and plan for a whole day in the preschool really helped me in my classroom now. I see how valuable it was and how much it didn't only help me in college, but now it's helping me in my real job in teaching.
Lastly, within the fashion and design arena of Family and Consumer Sciences, we have realigned with educational requirements, academic expectations, and we have included many more performance-based assessments. Beginning in grade six, students learn basic skills. Here's a sixth grader with the life skill of replacing a button that has fallen off. In seventh grade, they have a performance-based project assessment. And while the current project is boxer shorts, it can change, but the real key here is they are learning to read a detailed set of instructional materials. In grade eight, fashion students explore creativity and computer design. Within the high school, most students begin fashion in ninth grade, and Lindsay will explain some more.
I'm in Fashion 10, and we use a portfolio to make our clothing, and then we get to Fashion 20, which I took my second year. And you start becoming more creative and, you know, going away from patterns and starting to making something of your own, getting your more personal ideas and thinking you want to make. And then your third year, you start draping on a mannequin, and you start making your own patterns, and you start a collection, and you have a draping collection. And we have a fashion show at the end of the year, and we get to showcase all of our designs and the stuff we made over the year.
Fashion merchandising has been realigned to current standards, and a Level 20 has been added due to the block scheduling and increased student demand for further education.
Fashion merchandising is learning about business. We go into the city, we learn about what makes you shop at the store, and whatever culminating activities, including a boutique, send students from, and make profits, send students to, say, Fashion College of New York for summer program, and we give money to charity.
And interior design delves into CAD technology.
In interior design, students have the opportunity to work with professional CAD drawings in designing rooms that are aesthetically pleasing and follow the elements and principles of design.
In front of you, you have, we've provided you a sample of curriculum. It is the Fashion and Design 30-40 curriculum, and on page six, you would find this unit on draping and pattern drafting. In accordance with the unit, you begin with the essential questions, and for example, if we started with, what are the skills needed to execute your own designs? We'd move to the middle column, central understandings, what the student is able to know and understand, and this student would understand the construction techniques necessary to get a well-fitted garment or a lined jacket. And then in the skill objectives, what the student's able to do. This student is able to design a clothing collection using the pattern drafting or draping method of design. And we happen to have Catherine. We'll watch this for one minute. Again, Catherine, Catherine has taken four years of clothing design at Fairfield Ludlow High School, and she's going to just show you a quick synopsis of her collection.
So in my third year of fashion design, we learned how to pattern drape on a mannequin, and we also learned fashion illustration, which is the, basically, an example of what your garment looks like. And this is more, the flats are more of a technical design. So this is what you learn in your third year of taking fashion, which also follows through in your Fashion 40. This is part of my sundae collection, these two pieces here. And my inspiration for this collection was an actual ice cream sundae. The red shoes, for example, is a cherry, the black is the hot-fried sundae, and the white is obviously the middle ice cream. But in my current year of Fashion 40, we learned pattern drafting, which is making your own pattern by yourself with your own measurements and making a very perfect fit garment. This is one of my friends, Heather Anderson, who made her tailored pants, and this is her pattern draft that she can use as much as she wants, on any fabric that she can find. It's a wonderful program. I even took my sixth, seventh, and eighth grade in sewing, and I do believe that it has helped me excel in my four years of fashion design at Ludlow.
And where are you going to college, and what are you going to be studying?
I am going to Kent State University to study fashion merchandising, and I do believe having the knowledge of design will help me excel, other than most students who don't really have the opportunity to take this course. It will help me understand the construction and hopefully help me with my jobs in terms of making clothes. So thank you.
Right. Catherine had the opportunity to, to, to perform or be in a, again, a summative assessment of a fashion show, where she had to take her looks and walk down the runway with them. So that's always exciting. So Fairfield is lucky enough to be situated right next door to New York City, which is a global fashion center, where potential careers are plentiful and in demand.
Grow and progress as a fashion designer. I just missed this one later.
So how will we know what the student's know and is able to do? We establish clear and concise learning goals. So in this case, it is review and practice knife skills. So you can see here, the kids, we give them lots of things to review and practice their knife skills with, and these guys all have very nice knife skills going on here. We set clear, oops, did that one already, sorry. We utilize observational formative, no, I'm back one. We use district-wide alignment. What happens at Ward happens at Ludlow, and what happens at Ludlow happens at Ward. So you're going to go up and just click, oops, sorry, that's okay. Just click the green. Okay, and this is one of their final assessments, making a lined coat. We utilize observational formative assessment. So in this first video, Alyssa is reading to the kids in the preschool, and we know she's doing a good job because she's down at eye level, she's interacting with the kids, they're talking to her, she's responding to them. So we can tell that this is an appropriate way to read to kids. And here we have the egg flip. So he has accomplished it. Our finals, again, have been designed to be for performance-based summative assessments. One illustration is a commercial commissioned by the kids in the bake shop, and they work with an interdisciplinary group of marketing people and graphics people, and the graphics people do the signage, and the marketing people create commercials to promote their products. So it's a, three of our special, our electives are joined together in this effort.
United Pigs for America. It's all natural ingredients, handmade production.
And then in introduction to culinary, students are asked to show us in whatever media they choose, how to make a final product of their own choice, and they're doing this without a recipe. And this group chose a Pinterest YouTube venue for their marinara sauce.
Pour two tablespoons of oil in a pot until it disperses, and then saute the garlic until fragrant. Once the garlic is fragrant, pour in the tomatoes. Let the sauce come to a boil and then simmer for two to three minutes. Add salt, pepper, fresh parsley, and basil to your sauce.
So, lastly, in order to receive money. One more, that's okay, just one more, yeah. Lastly, in order to receive money through the Perkins Grant, we are required to test concentrators. Those students with two or more years in one subject. This standardized test taken by all schools in the state of Connecticut is called the NOCTI, and we are consistently ranked near the top. Which is a good thing because our NOCTI scores help with our budgeting. The last item that we need to discuss tonight, as money from the Perkins people is granted based on your scores. And we usually receive approximately $60,000 to help with materials within the school system that is shared between business, tech ed, and family and consumer sciences. We feel that we can implement our newly revised curriculum with monies already allocated for implementation and professional development. Thank you.
The curriculum presentations, Dr. Boyce and Dr. Jones, are getting better and better every year. Absent making a sport coat for me and bringing, you know, appetizers to the board, I can't think of anything else that you could have done. Thank you very much. Do you have anything final that you want to say before we go to questions?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. To the board, any questions for this curriculum? This is a first read. It will be on the agenda for the first meeting in May, which is our next regular meeting for vote, subject to the board asking any question that might delay it. This is Lou McCormick.
That was really, really great. That was like watching a little movie. I just want to say that your reputation precedes you. You guys are an outstanding part of the high schools and, you know, the overall districts. So thank you so much for your contributions. I love the fact that you raised your own funding. I think that's amazing. It just shows just how strong you are. And those are just wonderful models. I mean, I love that striped dress. So, you know, kudos to all of you for, for what you put together, and I wish you, you know, even more success.
Other comments or questions from the board? Mrs. Maxon Cannelly.
Again, I echo those comments. It was absolutely wonderful presentation. Again, I was all ready with my shot about you really want to win the vote, but yeah, you're already there on top of that, so with what's in the back, which I didn't see. I'm more of a couple of comments, and then I had one question. First of all, I just wanted to share that my favorite essential question in the entire curriculum packet was the sixth grade, why can't I run with a knife? I just thought I'd, that was a highlight. I liked that one. I love to think of the dynamic conversation that takes place around that essential question, but just to, I just want to comment specifically on a couple of things I especially appreciate. It's always a good reminder about the importance of the district-wide alignment. I think that's an important assurance that we need to be able to give our families, and I love that you explicitly addressed that. The Purposeful Skills Flow Chart, that was actually a comment that, or a question I'd raised when the social studies curriculum was up before us, and they were talking about how that was something they were in the midst of, and to see it so purposefully laid out like that was very impressive, and I was very happy to see that. And of course, the baking and pastry class, I, as a teacher, one of the first things I do is I look at my kids' student schedule, and I find the kids who are in the culinary arts program, especially the pastry class, and we have a little side conversation. But I did have a couple of questions. First of all, I know one of the goals in our district improvement plan was regarding the attracting of the non-typical student, which was nice to see a few gentlemen in the videos. I assume that for the most part in the department, that those represent your non-typical students, and I was wondering what you do in terms of the outreach. I know middle school, it's, you know, not an issue so much, but in the high school as an explicit goal. I was wondering what you do about that, or is it just letting the program speak for itself? Or what do you do, as I said, to address that goal?
I think most, mostly, we let the program speak for itself. The foods programs in the high schools, we get pretty much an even division. And in fact, sometimes we'll have more males, you know, than females. The other two programs, the early childhood, we've been working hard, human development, to get more boys, and we have been gradually increasing those numbers. So we're very pleased with that. A lot of it is, once you get a couple of boys in, then the word spreads. They'll tell their, you know, their contemporaries, and they think it's so cool that they got to take the baby home or work in the preschool. Textiles is probably the more difficult area, but.
I have, I have one.
You should come forward, if you would, to speak, so that you can use the microphone and also so that you will become a star on Fair TV.
Oh, okay. That was my hair. So the question is about the non-typical student. Fashion is a little difficult. There is sometimes a stigma associated, although we tell, when the eighth graders come on their tour, and we tell them that, you know, the greatest designers are men, and they, you know, they make the most money. And we tell them, you'll be with the girls. Like, you know, I try to do it. But it's difficult. I have had a couple of boys do it, and they end up being very successful. But I think they can't get past that hurdle of thinking it's really for girls. And I really tried. I know at Ward's the same thing.
I could answer too. Those are my.
And don't forget to state your name.
Okay, I'm Linda Muschala from Ludlow. The video with the boys, they were in my class, my child development class, and I feel strongly that the eighth grade night, when we really promote the program and word of mouth, one of, at least one of the boys in my class, those were only two of the four, their sisters had taken my, the classes before that, and I actually got to meet them when they were in sixth and seventh grade, and just encourage them and tell them that's where the best girls are in the child development class. And, you know, tell them how much we really do need more male teachers. And, you know, it's kind of a good area to, to test the waters and see if that's maybe what you might like to do as a career before you leave high school. So I'm happy about the, the increase in, in boys. We've really been trying.
Okay, thank you. I know my son has enormously, enormously enjoyed his eighth grade cooking class. It was, I can't imagine a ninth grade class filled with freshman boys in cooking, but that, so it was a great experience. So what was my other, my other question, I believe I had sent this to Dr. Boyce ahead of time, and I'm sorry to say, this was some time ago, and I'm sorry to say, I couldn't find your answer. And that was regarding, I know, new statute language regarding curricula and the life-threatening food allergies. And I apologize for putting you on the spot and not warning you about my question ahead of time. I'm happy to get it, wait till next time unless you can, because you gave me a very comprehensive answer, and I think it's just worth repeating.
I did. I checked with Rachel on that as well. Do you, can you speak to her?
Yeah. So in the middle school, there are no nuts at all. And then in the high school, we have, there are signs posted outside the rooms which say, we're not nut-free, we're not gluten-free, we're not, but we accommodate specific students, you know, on a case-by-case basis. So for example, you know, if you're gluten-free, you know, we will take care of that. And the nuts that we do have are contained and all of that. So we are, I think, providing the most opportunity for every student, but we're also providing every opportunity for those that have a special need.
And I think your question was about legislation that had not yet passed.
That's correct. It was, it was in the works, so I was warning.
If we have to make an adjustment, we will, obviously. But I, they do have a very good plan in place, and Rachel really is the leader of that to ensure that we give students opportunities, but also protect students with severe allergies.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Anybody else on the board? Mrs. Gerber.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you very much to Ms. Hastings. My daughter brought home some Eclair's today from the baking and pastry class. It was really serendipitous. It was delicious. And I'm not a big Eclair fan, but she also took the intro to culinary arts in the first semester and really got so much out of it. And my son, actually, when he was in high school, did take the culinary arts as well and became like the food police in our house about, and it had to be nutritious, had to be whole grain, all of those things. So it really made an impact on him, and that was a class he kind of stumbled into and really just got so much out of it. And, and I know my daughter is hoping to get into some additional classes next year, I think, the child development, because she's going to be a sophomore. So thank you. I mean, it's just a wonderful program, starting in sixth grade, but I think especially the high school program, I just, you know, both of my children have gotten so much out of them. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions or comments from the board? Yeah, Mrs. Carnell.
Yeah, I too would like to compliment the curriculum and the teachers. I've benefited from a few home-cooked meals for my son, and I'm still here to tell the tale. And we've enjoyed it tremendously, so thank you.
Anything else? If not, thank you again, not only for the teachers who came in support of the presenters and presented themselves as well, but for the year-long work to bring this curriculum forward to us. This will be on the next regular meeting, which will be the first meeting in May for adoption. Board members, if you have any questions in the meantime, between now and May, please feel free to send them in to the superintendent so that she can parcel them out as appropriate. Thank you again. We are on to old business, item 7A, which is enclosure number one. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the racial imbalance benchmark timeline as presented on March 16th, 2017. Can I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, will I have a second? Mr. Calabrese? I'll only make one comment. The benchmark planning amendment to the original plan starts on page seven to remind the board that the plan itself was adopted by this board and was given conditional approval by the State Board of Education, and they did ask us to make an amendment to what they consider to be amendment to our original plan, but they asked us to add benchmark planning items. And so pages seven through 12 are what we are talking about and approving to add to the original submission. Do you have any comments that you wish to make, Dr. Jones?
No, we just, we made the changes as requested until from the last meeting.
Questions from the board? Mr. Llewellyn.
I actually have a point of procedure. This is a voting item, and I was wondering if Mr. Calabrese was going to be taking part in this vote or not.
The answer is yes. He is a member of this board.
So he's a member of the board, but the town basically states that he cannot be sitting as a board member. So if we look at the town charter, he's no longer eligible.
His presence on this board is not on the agenda. He is a member of this board until he resigns.
There is a vote. No, that's actually not factually correct.
Mr. Llewellyn, this is not on the agenda.
So it's a point of procedure.
Mr. Llewellyn, this is not on the agenda.
Could you pass this around, please?
So. Mr. Llewellyn, this item is not on the agenda. I need to keep the discussion on the agenda item that's in front of us.
It's a point of order on the vote.
It's a point of order on the vote. It's a point of procedure.
When we get to the vote, you can ask a point of order.
This is a point of procedure before we begin the discussion.
No, Mr. Llewellyn, I have explained, I have.
I have a letter here from the Human Resource Department that says he has.
I have made my ruling, Mr. Llewellyn.
And I'm not asking you to make a rule. I'm saying it's a point of procedure. You can rule on a point of order.
I have made my ruling that you are out of order.
I would like to challenge that ruling.
Then make a motion.
I move that we discuss whether or not, that we discuss his eligibility, because he is not eligible per.
Make the motion, and then you can make the argument.
I make the motion that we discuss whether or not this vote should continue with him not recusing himself.
Thank you very much. Do we have a second? Mrs. Lou McCormick, do you wish to make your argument?
I do, I do. We have an email from Emmett Hibson to Bob Mayer dated March 23rd. Bob, this will confirm that Mike authorized me to make Anthony Calabrese a permanent director of Parks and Recreation. I've scheduled a time to meet with Anthony to confirm the details of his appointment. I expect to complete the transition to permanent employee by the end of next week. That would have been March 31st. If we look at Town Charter, section 2.1C, single office requirement for elected town official, no person shall be eligible to hold any elected town office, including membership on any elected board or commission who is at the same time an elected RTM member, an elected or appointed town officer, an elected state official, or member of an elected board or commission, or a permanent appointment to a board or commission. And then it goes on to say, for the purposes of this paragraph, the term town office does not include justices, but does include members of the Board of Education. If we go to the town website, the Parks and Rec, Mr. Calabrese is listed as the director. If we go to his LinkedIn account, he's had himself list as director since he was actually given the job back in November. So with HR having done the, with it being recognized, and having been recognized by the Board of Finance and the Board and Selectmen at their budgetary meetings, I think that he does not fulfill the obligations of 2.1C and is ineligible.
Thank you. For points of order, to remind you, the person who raises the point of order makes their argument, the chair who has ruled makes their argument, and then we go to vote. One of the phrases that Mr. Llewellyn read is that we expect to finalize that within the week. It has not been finalized. There is no official contract to name Mr. Calabrese the director of Parks and Recreation. So at the moment, he does not hold that job until there is a letter that is signed by both parties. Until a letter is signed by both parties, he is not required to resign from the board. This is not a back and forth, Mr. Llewellyn. You've made your argument, I'll make my argument, the board will vote on, on the point of order. So until that letter is filed and it is signed by both parties, Mr. Llewellyn is not required to resign, Mr. Calabrese is not required to resign, and it's my understanding in conversation with him that until that is official by written document, he won't resign, and he'll resign, no, this is not an argument.
I'm asking where you get your interpretation. Who told you this?
He is not required to resign until he is officially appointed by letter. So Mr. Llewellyn has made his argument, I've made my argument, all in favor of sust- All in favor of sustaining the point of order would be a yes, and if, which is accepting my position, and a no would be accepting Mr. Llewellyn's position.
I question the ethics of the chair on this issue.
Thank you very much. A point of order really is-
You're welcome.
How we handle that in the past.
And you can laugh, but that's a very sad statement, given that this is the Board of Education.
If we're allowed all sorts of side editorial remarks, I have plenty.
Mrs. Lou McCormick, please.
Please share.
Just talk into the microphone all night and not listen to the chair.
Okay, let's do it.
No. There's no further discussion. All in favor of sustaining the point of order, raise your hand. Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitco, Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli, all those opposed to sustaining the point of order, raise your hand.
They just sustained the point of order. That means they approved it.
Okay. Stay, please raise your hand. Are you, I, I made a point of order, and the board so far has sustained it.
He made the point of order, you guys just sustained it.
He made the ruling on the point of order. We're agreeing with the ruling on the point of order.
We're voting on the ruling of the point of order.
He made, he made the motion.
Yes, and I ruled that-
And you guys just sustained it.
Okay. All in favor of sustaining my ruling, please raise your hand.
Mr. Llewellyn made the motion.
All in favor of sustaining the point of order, please raise your hand. Mrs. Lou McCormick, Ms. Carnell, Mr. Llewellyn, thank you very much. Back to the original business item that's before us. My apologies to Mr. Calabrese for this interruption. Questions or comments on the racial imbalance benchmark timeline?
Excuse me, Chairman Dwyer, I'd like to understand when this becomes official. What is the procedure?
We're going to stay on the item. If you wish to have further conversation on it after the meeting, I'd be more than willing to talk to you.
Yeah, Ms. Gerber, is there something funny that you'd like to share with the board?
I would ask you to stay on the topic-
Yeah, I'd ask you that the board members respect each other.
Thank you.
Yeah, so what are you laughing about? Because someone made a comment.
Please.
This is actually a pretty serious issue, because there's a conflict of interest of one of our board members.
You have not been recognized.
This is called a conflict of interest. You understand what that means, and that's why we're raising it. It's a very serious issue, and the fact that you're just overruling, that's fine. You don't have to recognize me. You tend not to record what we say anyways.
Back to the item that's before us, the racial imbalance benchmark timeline. Any questions or comments from board members on the racial imbalance timeline? Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli.
Just one question through the chair to Dr. Jones, is that I was wondering if you have, because we obviously put out there that we were very interested in feedback from the public. I know we on the board have received very little. I was wondering if you had received in central office any feedback, any either pointed criticisms or suggestions that we should factor into our discussion tonight. Obviously, we still know our ones from the last meeting, but I was curious if you had received anything else.
I really have not received a great deal of dialogue, other than when I've been out in the community, and people understand that we're going to follow the timeline and be doing due diligence to figure out where we are after we go to the State Board in May.
And I will say that while the comment was, "When we go to the State Board in May", the, this document will get to the State Board of Education. It's up to them to decide whether we're on the May agenda or the June agenda or when. So, we think the earliest it would be is May, but we'll wait for them to notify us. And when we know that we're scheduled, we'll notify the board and the public. Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli, you have other comments?
And then one other follow, I mean, I think people have read about this in the press, they may have read about it on Facebook, but I was hoping you could talk a little bit about your impressions of the visit of the state delegation to McKinley, the tour that they received, and the feedback that they gave you.
You know, it was a great tour, and we have had that feedback. We've had two technical assistance phone calls since our last meeting when we looked at this plan. The last, the second one was today, this morning, so it was after the visit, and I think it was very, very helpful, just to understand what the complexity of McKinley and the uniqueness that it really is an international school. And it was very eye-opening. I can say the commissioner was also incredibly impressed with what was happening in the classroom, and that was something I didn't really think as much about before we did the tour, but she could see all of the work that they've done, just on common core, and the excellent instruction that's happening in that building, and also just the facility itself, because it is one of our nicest buildings that we have, where it's air-conditioned, it's new. It's not, you know, an old building on this side of town where we have segregation happening, which is really where that law was coming from back in the 60s. So, I think it was very eye-opening and very well-received.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions or comments on the racial imbalance benchmark timeline, the motion that's in front of us? Mrs. Lou McCormick.
So, as I've mentioned before, I do take issue with the timeline. Of all the items that we have listed on them, it's clear that if the state is actually going to require us to solve this issue, we cannot avoid the redistricting or the magnet options, which are placed much later in our timeline, versus the items that will cost the district, I think, quite a sum of money over time, and spend money on non-mandated populations. Our responsibility as a board is to best serve the K through 12 population to the best of our ability. And the fact that we keep spreading ourselves so thin by continuing to first spend on populations that are not part of our mandate, I understand that we're trying to do the greater good, but as a consequence, we could be put in a position to cut back on some of our core offerings, like world language and some of the other tier-one, tier-two, tier-three items that you've listed, which to me is a tragedy. Why would we put those items in a backseat and have our primary population, K through 12, suffer in exchange for non-mandated population spending by expanding the pre-K program, by increasing the open choice program, by doing studies before, on all of these, before we actually get to items that, I think at the end of the day, we're going to be forced to consider, because they are the ones that have been proven in other districts to actually have resolved a racial imbalance. And if you even talk to other districts who have done magnet programs over and over and over again for the last decade, and I've spoken to some board members there, they have indicated that they've done so with some frustration, meaning that it hasn't really been as effective as they hoped, and that redistricting seems to be the only option, but it's very difficult in their district. However, we are not like that district, and redistricting would not be as complicated, because to some extent, where we draw our lines are controlled, they're not driven as much by the physical attributes of the land that we're on. We can actually cross a road, include a whole neighborhood. We can do these things within Fairfield, and in a way, we're fortunate that we can do that. So, I would suggest that we reconsider the ordering of this, and first, put forth the items that we know that are going to solve the issue, and then see if, in fact, we actually need to add these other items, because I don't believe that they create a serious solution, and we all know that they don't. They marginally improve the situation, but why do that when we can probably solve the whole issue by considering the redistricting and the magnet program right up front? And then once we see that, we can figure out, well, do we have, what is our financial situation at that point? And can we do other things, other programs that we enjoy and we believe we should be doing, like the pre-K, like the open choice? However, I feel that we need to do what we have to do first, the mandated part, and then you do the electives second. And I can't understand why we continually reverse the order. And not only reverse the order, but now we're going to commit ourselves to expand and spend millions of dollars, even more, to support this other concept, to then potentially put us in a position later to close other neighborhood schools. Why would we do that? I don't think we've done a deep enough analysis on the redistricting, on the availability within the classrooms, within the school, to start dedicating monies to these non-mandated populations and to expansion of permanent infrastructure costing millions of dollars before we've actually seriously come up with a solution, which we know at the end of the day, we might have to, unless the state comes around. Now, I'm all for the state coming around. I know that Malloy has made comments that maybe he's going to swing to the other side and try to ask that this whole thing be changed regarding the mandates, but it's not here yet. And yet, we're willing to spend millions of dollars when we just don't have it, and I don't understand that, particularly when we keep saying that open choice costs us nothing. I mean, I've looked at those numbers. It's going to cost us something. You can't say that an open-choice student is only revenue. I can see that you're trying to look at the cash flow you get from the state, but every child is no different from any other child in that they each take up a certain amount of resources from the district. And on average, it's, say, $16,000. And when you look at the rebate or that we receive from the state, after all the numbers you've given us, Dr. Jones, which we appreciate, that number might be reduced from $16,000 to, say, $15,000. But when you apply that over 70-odd kids, it ends up being over a million dollars a year that's still allocated. Now, you can say, "Well, I allocated it optimally so that we can't pinpoint where that money is," but you know what? You can do that with every child. That argument holds true with any child. And therefore, there still is a cost to all of this, and if we continue to expand in areas that aren't even mandated, we are going to keep spending ourselves into a deeper and deeper pit. Now, we can say, "Well, our budget is different from the town budget, which is different from the state's budget," but I don't think we all really believe that. We all know that we share in the same pocketbook, and we bear the same responsibility to be responsible and prudent in how we spend our funds. And I would strongly suggest that we start prioritizing how we spend it on mandated functions first, before we expand and prioritize non-mandated projects that we think we should be doing. We do what we have to first, we do what we'd like to second.
Thank you. Other comments that board members wish to make on the racial imbalance plan? Seeing no hands, let me go out to the public. This is a voting item, so any member of the public that wishes to come forward can do so now. Please state your name and address.
We've done so much of this before. We've supposedly had committees who have looked at things. We've basically sent the same, with the exception of an exact timeline. We've done this for the last 10 years. And unfortunately, what we find is, a lot of the information of what the works of many of these committees have done never really seems to find the light of day, or comes as final recommendations before this item goes up to Hartford. So, what needs to start happening is, these committees need to be opened, if we're really going to have committees, open to the public, and I'd like to see not just parents of the schools involved, and not just teachers, curriculum leaders, I'd like to see the public. I'd like to see our seniors in town. I'd like to see this engaged across, because this needs to be a district-wide discussion. Anytime we start talking about magnet programs and the potential of redistricting or closing schools, because with one hand, we're doing one thing, and another hand, we're advocating and talking about closing schools at the last town-wide meeting on this. So, that, that needs to. I'd like to see the Board of Ed have a town hall meeting like the Board of Finance does on a Saturday morning, open to the entire public. Now, there is one other issue that I'd like to mention. I have asked for the attorney ruling on Mr. Calabrese and his position. I, with all due respect, Mr. Dwyer-
That item is not-
I, I'm going to finish. I'm sorry.
No, you are not. That item is not on our agenda, and so therefore, I need to enforce the standards for everybody, which includes members of the public as well.
And that's fine. I hear what you're saying.
Please, you may, you may submit whatever you want to the board in writing, and we'll make sure that every board member gets it.
No, you know what? Unfortunately, I find that too much of this goes on behind closed doors, and with all due respect to the chair, I find it inconscionable that I'm talking to the first selectman and being told that a director cannot hold this position, yet the town attorney ruled that an interim can.
Thank you very much.
No, I'm sorry, this is, this is something that needs-
I understand what you're saying, but that item is not on our agenda.
And I appreciate that, but how many different ways can one person be accommodated by the chair of the Board of Ed and the first selectman of this town to hold a position on this-
Chairman Dwyer, do we have a protocol for removing the microphone from members of the public?
It's called a conflict of interest.
Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli?
A member of the public who's completely disregarding direction, there needs a protocol.
Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli, please.
I appreciate-
I'd ask you to step back from the microphone.
I will step back now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other members of the public that wish to speak on this agenda item? Seeing none, back to the board for a vote. If we're ready for a vote? Okay, thank you very much. Let the minutes record that three members of the board have decided not to vote and have absented them from the meeting. Any other member of the board that is still remaining, and for the public's point of view, five is the quorum that we need. We do still have five members here, so we may continue the meeting. Any other member of the board have a question on the racial imbalance plan? Having none, all in favor of the plan, please raise your hand. It is unanimous with the five members that are still here. Thank you very much. On to item 7B, adoption of policies. The chair of the Policy Committee, Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli.
Make the motion?
Oh, yeah, these are, these are not first readings, these are, thank you very much. We'll do one at a time. The recommended motion for the first policy is that the Board of Education adopt policy 5145.15, Students Directory Information. Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli makes the motion, and Mrs. Gerber seconds it. Please make your presentation.
The only question I had received about this was Mr. Llewellyn's at the last meeting. I did get him the answer to those questions. I can't speak to whether the answer satisfied him or not, but that, I didn't receive any other queries, so I don't have anything else to add.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board members? Any questions from the board members? Seeing none, this is a voting item, out to the public. If any member of the public wishes to make a presentation on the policy regarding Students Directory Information, please come forward. Seeing nobody come forward, back to the board for a vote. The motion on the table is that the Board of Education adopt policy 5145.15, Students Directory Information. All in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous with the five members present. Thank you very much. The second policy being presented, the recommended motion is that the Board of Education adopt policy 6111, Instruction Schedules Student Calendar. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli, Mrs. Gerber seconds it. Do you have a comment?
Actually, a couple of comments. And first of all, I was remiss flying past Directory Information, and for anyone who's paying attention, watching, and is actually interested in the business that the board is following through on, I wanted to just, through the board, make the board aware that through Policy Committee, we've been receiving communication a great deal from certain PTAs regarding having the district's technology work with individual PTAs' technology regarding a transfer of directory information, that this is something some PTAs have asked for. It's, it's a lot of work for our membership chairs, and I ask the, what's the word I'm looking for? Just a side note, sidebar to the board, that we will be talking about at PTA Council this, and that we're encouraging all PTAs to send a president, a membership chair, because this is something that the Policy Committee has been talking about and working with, and Nancy Burns and staff is going to be meeting with these people, hopefully in May, that's what we'll be talking about. So, that Directory Information policy is going to be very important, and we're hoping that this will work out. Then regarding schedules, the only question I'd received about this was Mrs. Gerber asking for the previous policy, which we were remiss in not sending. You received that in, I believe it was in the Friday packet. I don't know if there are any additional questions, but again, thank you for that from Mrs. Gerber, but otherwise, I have nothing to add.
Any questions from the board on this policy? Seeing now, again, this is a voting item, out to the public on the new policy regarding Schedules Student Calendar. Seeing nobody coming forward, back to the board for a vote. All in favor of the motion that is that the Board of Education adopt policy 6111, Instruction Schedules Student Calendar, please raise your hand. Unanimous with the five members present, thank you very much. We're on to item, on to new business, 8A, the first reading of SAT mindset survey. Is Ms. Barber in the room? Ms. Barber in the room? For the board, while you're coming forward, this is on as a first reading. It is a survey to help with a coursework, and there's no reason why the board, by a two-thirds vote, which would be three of us, couldn't say, well, we might as well take action tonight. This doesn't really require it to be held over. But if any member of the board wishes it to be held over, then it's been put on the board accordingly. So after the presentation, if there's any board member that wishes to say, well, let's just take action tonight, then just make a motion to add this item to the agenda for action. We'll take that motion, then we would take the motion for approving the survey. We don't need to. I'm just making that as an offer to the board. Ms. Barber, you have a couple of minutes of presentation for us.
Hi. Okay. Yeah, I'll make this brief, because you've presumably read my proposal. But I'm currently a doctoral student at Teachers College, Columbia University. I'm very interested in studying how parent mindset relates to student mindset and student mathematics performance. I would be studying that as both a qualitative and a quantitative method. The quantitative method entails surveys that have been already validated. I would give parents online a mindset survey by Carol Dweck, and then I would give their high school senior the same mindset survey. I would also give the seniors two additional surveys. One is a GRIIT survey, validated by Angela Duckworth, and then also a demographic survey, so that I can see what their highest mathematics performance on the SAT was. I would then, here's the qualitative part, I would then ask them to come in for a 15- to 30-minute interview. I've also given you my interview protocol, the questions I would ask. These would be audio-recorded, not like video-recorded. And I think I have had very detailed analysis of how I plan to store the data and protect the information. Okay, yeah.
Okay. Questions from the board? Ms. Pitko, followed by Mrs. Maxon, Canelli.
Are we the only high schools you're going to be sampling?
Yeah, you would be. So it would be both Fairfield Ward High School and Fairfield Ludlow High School. I would need 16 student participants, and then if both of their parents can be part of the study, both parents.
So is it a percentage of the sample of population that you're looking for?
Yeah, yeah. I mainly, I needed a, it's more so a preliminary study, that was the word I was searching for, because obviously, to have much measure in the academic world, I would need more participants. So it's a preliminary study. The reason I chose 16 is because of the mindset classifications. There are four. So I'm hoping it's a very selective process, my participant pool. I would have four from each mindset category.
Mrs. Maxon, Canelli.
Yes. First of all, I was curious, having read through this, is this a form that you're, that comes from, or maybe actually through the chair, Dr. Jones, is this a form that anyone in the outside public has to go through, filling all of this out if they wish to do a survey in the district?
We are going by our board policy tonight, and I was informed that we don't, we don't get a lot of these, I guess, in the history.
No. I just, because I was going to commend somebody for the thoroughness of this form that was filled out.
It's from Columbia, so it's part of the Institutional Review Board application.
Okay.
They have approved it pending your approval. So whatever you guys say, then it's approved by Columbia.
Okay.
Yeah, it's their form, though.
Yeah, I'd had two questions about it. First, I'd also questioned the small sample size and where that was coming from, but now that's already been addressed. But I was also wondering, would we be able, would you make any form of presentation, formal or otherwise, regarding the results?
I would be more than happy to. I don't know if you want to read my dissertation. That's probably going to be 100 pages, but I can make a brief presentation for you if you'd like.
Okay. I certainly would be interested in...
Yeah, absolutely. I think it could go a long way in reflection on how parent mindset does affect your children. You know, I was inspired from open house night, where parents, when I usually teach a lesson, some of them will sit back and be like, oh, gosh, I can't do that. I'm just wondering, like, what is that doing to your child? So, yeah, I'd be more than happy to.
Okay. Thank you.
This is being supervised by a doctoral dissertation committee, composed of people who know what they're doing.
Yes, yeah.
And number two, you only need 16, so obviously, this is a volunteer effort on the part of the students and the parents. I thought I saw something in here about opt-out, but essentially, if they don't opt-in, it's not like you're trying to survey a large group of students.
Exactly. And as an incentive, I would offer an hour extra help to their high school senior.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from board members on this topic? Anybody wish to advance it for vote tonight, or let it over for the next first meeting in May? Mrs. Maxon, Canelli.
No, I see this as being an all-positive thing. I think it'd be great to get this information, as small a sample size as it is. It's a great topic. I think it's a great topic of conversation for our parents. So in order to help you get to your work, which we'll benefit from in whatever measure, I would make that motion to have this be a voting item tonight.
Do I have a second?
Add an item to the agenda first?
Add the item as a voting item.
So I'd like to make the motion to add this as a voting item tonight.
Okay. And Ms. Pitko, were you about to second that? Okay. You've made your comments. Any other comments on that?
No.
Does the board understand that we need three out of five votes to add it as a voting item tonight, which is the SAT Mindset Survey? Any member of the public wish to make a comment on this as, if we vote to make it a voting item, it would then therefore be allowed for the public? Anybody on the public wish to make a comment? You can make the comment now while we're acting on this motion, or you could make the comment when we actually bring it forward for a vote, either or, but not both.
Suzanne Misco, 123 Rygate Road. The only concern I had about this, it's pretty intense, is that once you're looking at seniors in high school, because it's not a graduation requirement to go four years of math, my only concern is, are you missing out on the ability to talk to students who, I mean, you were talking about an open house, you have parents who say, oh, I can't do this. You've got a group of kids that run in a lower math line who probably aren't anxious to continue it senior year, and I would think that would be an interesting piece to have in the sampling, if we're looking at mindset of parents' influence on children in math continuing on into senior year.
Thank you very much.
It's just a suggestion. I can...
We take comments from the public, but we don't kind of do a Q&amp;A on it. Anybody else from the public wish to make a comment on whether we add this as a voting item to the agenda? And obviously, if, once we adopt it for a voting item, you could comment at that time as well. Back to the board. All in favor of adding this item as a voting item, please raise your hand. It's unanimous with the five members present. So now it is a voting item that the board approve the SAT Mindset Survey. How does parent mindset influence child mathematical experience? Do I have a motion? Let me get the motion. The motion on the table. Mrs. Maxon, Canelli, followed by Ms. Pitko, do you have a comment that you wish to make?
No, I apologize. I had, actually, one other question. I forgot. I had it underlined and forgot to ask it.
That is now as a voting item, so ask the question.
Yes. The paragraph on feedback, which I think is really important, I apologize if I missed it, but how, that whole piece of the idea that feedback has been shown to affect student performance and resiliency, how that impacts anxiety, et cetera, is that solely through the interview that you would be eliciting that information, or?
That is solely through the interview, yes.
Okay, so it's not like that they would be actually receiving tangible feedback and evaluating the reactions to it?
It would more be like a question prompt to see what their reaction. I don't want to probe them too far to elicit a certain type of response.
Okay. And then, one other question. Is the reason that you're going for seniors because they'll have the SAT results? Because otherwise, I would, I think, a decent point of why not go for juniors then?
Yeah, so it's not really necessary that they're currently taking a mathematics course their senior year, but I did need the SAT exam, and especially since it has undergone changes lately. I needed the, I needed a certain pool.
Thank you.
Ms. Pitko.
I just wanted to add that Mrs. Maxon, Canelli and I are educators, and so we can see the value in, you know, the growth mindset, which is a book that many educators in their master's program have to read.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, out to the public, for those who have not already spoken on this issue. Anybody else wish to come forward and speak on it prior to vote? Seeing nobody come back to the board. The motion in front of us is to approve the SAT Mindset Survey. How does parent mindset influence child mathematical experience? All in favor, please raise your hand. It's unanimous with the five members present. Thank you very much. You have your approvals. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Item 8B, regarding the calendar for the special election, the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve to amend the 2016-17 school calendar per enclosure number three, which allows for the closing of schools for the special election date of June 6. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, do I have a second? I'll second it. Dr. Jones, you have a memo in here regarding that? Do you have any comments that you wish to make?
We do. There are a couple of key points. We get calls on the calendar almost daily. We were waiting to see, first of all, on the special election and what was going to definitely happen with that. So that's why we want approval to take the June 6 date at the recommendation of the police department and not have an instructional day, but instead have a professional day. And again, that's because they want our buildings closed. The other thing that you see reflected in here is the Thursday and the Friday would actually put all of our schools, except McKinley, at 180 days. We extended the Thursday, Friday to be full days, trying to get closer to that 181, but not also really penalizing, and to a certain degree, our students for having the special election. With McKinley, we did try for a waiver, and apparently, they are very, very limited. They said that an emergency does not qualify because the building was closed. And as a matter of fact, it didn't really get passed their attorney to even be on an agenda item. It just was no question that it's not eligible. So trying to look at keeping everybody in the district on the same amount of days, we could get McKinley to 180 by going Monday and Tuesday. If we put everybody on a 182-day calendar, then we would all, the rest of the district would finish Monday, Tuesday, McKinley would have to go into the Wednesday and the Thursday. And I agree with what the speaker said in that, especially for teachers, they work on snow days. I know you guys know that, that it's not just a day off, but we have to, by law, go to the 180. And so this is the calendar that was trying to meet the special election, take care of the McKinley, getting them to 180, and also having graduation at a time that we thought was best for families. And we don't graduate typically on a Friday, and we don't graduate on Saturdays in Fairfield, and so it was pushing us to also a Monday or Tuesday graduation. So this is kind of taking some unusual circumstances and putting them together with a calendar we thought was best. I will say, our middle school would love it if we would even take this calendar and make the Friday a half-day, because they generally have their moving up in the afternoon, and our elementaries do a lot of that as well. But they generally have their moving up, so it's not like staff aren't busy and working. What this will make a difference is kids being able to get dressed up as, the same way that they normally would for their afternoon ceremonies or morning ceremonies.
Okay. Questions from the board? Mrs. Maxon, Canelli.
And I thank you, Dr. Jones. I realized very belatedly that I had not thanked you by email when I had sent you my question, and you replied, and I apologize for that. I think it's worth repeating the information so that the public can hear, because I really still don't quite understand how it can work that four snow days and a June 6 day, five days, can be made up with half-days. I mean, to me, it's a 180. It is 180 for the regular student, for the student, non-Minister's students right now. So I don't understand how making half-days into full-days, if I will, counts. And then that leads me to another question, but I'd give one at a time.
It doesn't officially count. We wouldn't submit, for instance, to the state. We did 181. We were trying to bring something to the board that would be tenable, that would be able to meet the needs of all these different issues that are at play. But it keeps us legally at 180 for everybody.
So adding a half-day of school can't, case in point, I'm thinking of our early release days for the spring conferences. If something worked out creatively with McKinley that those half-day early release days became full days, there's nothing in that that can make up the time that's lost.
No, no, not legally. We have to be in school, and if we extend two hours, we're not going to get an extra time for that. Connecticut doesn't have an hours ruling. I wish they would, and I've already reached out to our representatives to ask them to help us work on that in the future. Most states do. We say how many hours you have to be in school, but we couple that with how many days, and there is no flexibility in Connecticut.
And then, is there any, I don't know if any conversation has taken place or could take place regarding the June 6. Obviously, unfortunately, McKinley is a polling site, and the issue of moving a polling site, I don't, I wouldn't, I would not cross that line. I mean, that's not something that can be done in such short order, because that involves the RTM, et cetera. But my question is regarding security at McKinley, such that it could remain a polling site.
Well...
Sorry, remain a polling site and have the school day.
You know, and I'll be very honest, I don't have as great a concern about an election day as the police do about that day. I think that we would be safe, but when the police have advised that, and they are the authority really for safety for us, I felt like, and we did discuss this, could we go have McKinley have school that day and also have additional security? But then if something happened, we've gone against what was advised by our local police department, and we just felt like that was not in the best interest. If it's not safe for one building, it's not safe for any of them.
Right, because, and I didn't realize there'd been a more recent conversation. I know when the conversation had first taken place, it completely made sense to me, because we have multiple schools that are polling locations, and we couldn't possibly expect the police to cover all of them. But if it were only one site, that that's still not something that could be worked out, even with a half-day, which counts as our day, and counting on people not really voting early. Again, so that is a conversation that's taken place with police, and they maintain their stance.
Yeah, and we actually, early on, just even inquired about moving the polling place, and also asking if they would please poll on a Saturday.
And got nowhere.
Well, it just, it wasn't positively...
First, I would say that the June 6 date was set by a judge in a court, so the town did not have a say in choosing the date. Well, actually, they did, because the town clerk originally proposed that date, but ultimately, it was the judge that set the date.
Okay.
Did you say, was that a second question as well, or do you have a second question?
I think I probably worked in more than two, so...
Okay, fair enough. Any other comments or questions from the board on this motion to close schools on June 6? Seeing none, out to the public, this is a voting item. Any member of the public that wishes to make a comment on the amending the school calendar per enclosure three to close schools on June 6 for the special election, please come forward. Seeing nobody coming forward, back to the board. The motion before you is that the Board of Education approve to amend the 2016-17 school calendar per enclosure number three. And enclosure number three, for your reference, is closing the schools for the special election date of June 6. All in favor, please raise your hand. Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitko opposed. Mrs. Maxon, Canelli, the motion passes four to one. Thank you very much.
Can I ask a question, too? Generally, it does not come to the board if we are going to have a shortened day, but I would like just to know input from the board, if you would be comfortable with us on Friday having a shortened day, or is that going too far where you're not comfortable with the calendar?
I'm clearly not too comfortable with that, so...
And I'll say that that would be an interesting conversation to the board to have, because we have normally left it to the superintendent to make decisions on shortening days for good and just reasons, mostly around snow, but also around mechanical failures or anything else. And so I think the board would want to have a conversation about whether this particular circumstance was special, or would it lead to other times where you felt that you needed to ask. And so I would suggest that the board, if they want to have this as a conversation, let me know so I can put it on a future agenda.
Mr. Dwyer?
Item 8.
I'm seeking clarification on your comment. Is that you're looking for board conversation to help with the determination of this year, or?
No, not this year. The general question as to, we have normally left it up to the superintendent to make the management decision around whether to close school early for good and just reasons. And so if we were to choose to not want to have her do it on this particular day, does that set a precedent for each time she wants to make a decision, or he, to close school on a half-day, that there's somehow an inference that she then has to ask the board? So I'd like to have a conversation as to whether the board wants to go down that path or not. And that's what I mean, if the board wants to have that kind of a conversation. And that's what I mean, if the board wants to have that kind of a conversation, let me know, so I can put that topic on the agenda.
Okay.
So at the moment, the superintendent is, by custom, able to make decisions around half-days if she finds it's in the best interest of the students. Maybe by this conversation, she might say, "I'm not going to touch that right now," but...
So just clarifying that the half-day that we added to make up for not having school on Monday or Tuesday is a possibility for now being returned to a half-day, just so I can clarify.
I don't exactly know what she was meaning.
Okay, thank you.
She might do, but I'm only concerned about setting a precedent about suddenly something that we normally leave to the superintendent suddenly becoming a board issue. On to item eight C. This is our annual setting the dates of graduation, the recommended motion that the Board of Education established Thursday, June 15th, 2017, at 6:00 p.m. as the date and time of graduation for Fairfield Ludlow High School and Fairfield Ward High School. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, Ms. Pitco seconded it. You'll defer to the superintendent, or do you have a comment situation? Anything you want to comment on?
No.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Mrs. Max and Connolly.
Not a question, just a statement that while I was not in favor of the vote we just did, that my vote on this represents my yielding to the will of the board.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the board for our annual Thursday event? Seeing none, back out to the public, any member of the public wish to comment on the date that is recommended for high school graduations? Seeing no member of the public, back to the board. All in favor of the motion that is in front of you, I won't read the whole thing, but it's essentially establishing Thursday, June 15th, 2017, at 6:00 p.m. as the date of both high school graduations. All in favor, please raise your hand. It's five and oh. By those present, thank you very much. The next motion is for item eight D, acceptance of Riverfield project, recommended motion that the Board of Education accept Riverfield project number 0510125 EA as complete. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Max and Connolly, seconded by Mrs. Gerber. I'll just make one comment. Sometimes we have items on here that are first read and then vote the next meeting. For those items that are kind of like, this is standard operating business. The building committee submitted the appropriate letter. The sooner we vote this, the sooner we start putting it through the machinery up at the state, and the sooner the final reimbursement comes to us. But if any member of the board says they have a question, that they'd like to defer action on this till the next meeting, that's perfectly acceptable as well. With that stated, any comments from board members on accepting the Riverfield project that's been in operation for a number of years? Mrs. Max and Connolly.
I just simply wanted to thank the Riverfield Building Committee members, the board members who have served as liaisons to that. This was a tremendous effort, and as with every building committee, ran into its fair share of obstacles. And I'm sure it's a great pleasure to them to submit this, as it is for us to accept it. So just my thanks to them for their work, and to the staff as well, I'm sorry.
The chairman, Tom Quinn, emailed me this afternoon that he has a family issue that prevented him from coming out tonight, which means that he's skipping one of, I think, three hundred and two meetings that he has gone to on this project. So we will give him dispensation, because he certainly, together with his whole committee, as Mrs. Max and Connolly stated, as well as the staff, did yeoman's job on this project. And in fact, the Board of Finance, who wanted to look at a completed project before acting on the Holland Hill project, took a look at Riverfield and was very impressed with what they saw, and I think that was very helpful to that board in moving that project forward. Members of the board, do you have a question or a comment on the adopting, accepting the Riverfield project? Seeing none, out to the public, any member of the public wish to make a comment on the motion to accept the Riverfield project? Seeing nobody come forward, back to the board. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education accept Riverfield project. I won't read the number as complete. All in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous with five oh. Thank you very much. The same comment I would make about the Tomlinson partial re-roofing. Re-roofing is a kind of a standard ed spec. It's not a complicated thing, so we put it on for action, so that we might move this project along. So the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the Tomlinson Middle School partial re-roof project ed specs. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Mrs. Max and Connolly. Mr. Cullen, do you have any comments that you wish to make? No? Okay. Any comments from board members or questions from board members? How many roofs do we have in this -- no, no, in the whole district?
Just pull a number, we won't know.
A lot, just so that the public knows that we have approved.
How many roofs on schools we have in the whole district?
My only purpose in asking is so the public knows that we approve these re-roofing ed specs all the time.
Yes, we do.
And this is just standard business. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, out to the public, any questions regarding the accepting the Tomlinson Middle School partial re-roof project ed specs? Seeing none, back to the board. The motion is that the Board of Education approve the Tomlinson Middle School partial re-roofing project ed specs. All in favor, please raise your hand. The motion is approved, five oh unanimously by those present. On to item F, first reading of solar carport project proposal at Fairfield Ludlow High School and Fairfield Ward High School. Thompson is here, so please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Dwyer. Can you hear me if I'm up this high? I'm going to hold some boards here, so that we have something to look at while I'm talking. I've got a twenty-minute version of this and a five-minute version. I'm going to give you the five minutes.
Thank you very much.
Given the hour. So we're here to talk about a proposal for...
Can I interrupt just for one moment? If members of the public actually wanted to see what the boards look like, feel free to go over by the dinosaur chart or over by the TV there, so that you might get a perspective on them. You don't need to, but I make that offer to you. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you again. And I'm very excited to see Riverfield come to a close. I was a member of the building committee, so I didn't think, it didn't feel like three hundred and two meetings, but in any event. We are here to make a proposal for solar carports for both of the high schools, Ward and Ludlow. And I first want to start by thanking the administration for all their help. The endurance award goes to Mr. Ebling. He's, I think this is the sixth time he's been through this solar talk, but Mr. Hatsis and Dr. Jones has helped, Sal Morabito, Mr. Cullen at Bowman, and let me also thank Mary Hoag for her help. I also had hoped to thank Mr. Lawell, and he sat down and gave me some really good input on the proposal. What we have here are renderings of what the carports will look like, and they would be constructed using a vehicle called a power purchase agreement. And what a power purchase agreement is, is very simple. A solar vendor, and let me also introduce Sam Wahab here from Skyview Solar. The solar vendor would design, build, own, operate, maintain, ensure, finance, get the permits for, do everything associated with building these. The town doesn't have to do anything other than give the space to put the carports and agree to purchase the power that the solar makes. And the power would be at a price that is less than what the town currently pays, which is fifteen point eight cents a kilowatt hour. The power purchase agreements are for thirteen point two-five cents a kilowatt hour for Ward and fourteen point five cents kilowatt hour for Ludlow. That's in the packet that you have. When these are completed, they will make approximately one-third of the energy required for each of these schools. Given that we've already completed the rooftop solar for these schools, those made about a third, so we'll be making around two-thirds of the electricity for the high schools. The total size of these arrays is nine hundred and eighty kilowatts. That's four hundred for Ludlow, five hundred and eighty for Ward. The town has a very conservative formula for calculating the savings. We have to assume that the electric price does not increase. So we assume zero escalation of the electric price. We already have gotten a letter from United Illuminating that it's going to go up ten percent each year for the next two years. So that fifteen point eight is going to be nineteen two years from now. The PPA price will stay flat for twenty years. But using the town's conservative formula, the savings lifetime will be one point two million dollars, just a little bit above that. If we use what many other towns in Fairfield County use, they use three percent escalator, and that savings would be two point one million. But that is, I must emphasize, that's not the official number. The official number is one point two. If we can get approval from the Board of Ed and then the Board of Selectmen, we can, by a timeline of about mid-May, we can order the steel required for the carports, and we can construct these projects this summer. Following up on the comments that were made about outreach, we've done everything we can to reach out to the community. We had a public meeting that was held at Ward. We advertised it as best we could through Peachjar, through the town website, through the first selectman's office. We sent letters to all the neighbors, two hundred, I shouldn't say all the neighbors, two hundred neighbors at Ward, and we had a pretty good turnout, about twenty folks turned out at that meeting. We've also presented at the Ward PTA. We were on the agenda for the Ludlow PTA, but they canceled their meeting and came to your meeting, I guess, the last time around. I've also been communicating with neighbors individually and also going door-to-door to neighbors and making sure that they're aware of the process to provide input. We've been working with one neighbor, too, who is working, in the process of selling his home, and was a little concerned about being able to see it through the woods during the winter. So we're working, we worked to develop a screening plan, and that would be installed as part of that construction. The project has been okayed by the Fairfield. We have this all in writing, Sal has everything, Fairfield Police Department, Fairfield Fire Department, Department of Public Works, both from a plowing perspective and from a paving perspective, and from the school transportation manager. So in summary, this project presents great, a great financial opportunity. There's not only savings, but there is, if you will, security from a budget perspective. The price for the solar-related power stays fixed for twenty years. So not only is it less than today, it will stay at that low level for twenty years. There's great environmental benefits. Schools actually are known to be hotspots for air emissions, you know, compared to other areas. You know, probably our worst area is the I-95 rest area, but schools with all their buses and all the cars coming in and out, it's a concern. And we love the idea that we can do something to improve air quality, especially with the ability for students to consider electric vehicles. These carports would have the ability for them to trickle-charge their electric cars. So if we can change that trend of coming in with fossil-fuel burning vehicles, we think that's a good thing long-term for the community. Lastly, and I think something that is really near and dear to my heart, having done a lot of work with the school system on clean energy over the years, I think that when solar is up on the roof and kids can learn about it, that's good. This is something they'll see every day, it'll be part of their life. The educational opportunities here are tremendous. Every kid in Fairfield Public Schools will someday be able to go to these high schools and be able to see the solar ray and know that they're in a smart town that cares about the planet. And so I love the idea of elementary schools being able to do field trips to these, for example. The AP Environmental Science teachers, I think, are thrilled with this. The physics teachers, they'll be able to teach technology and science with something really hands-on, so I'm very, very excited with that. So with that, I thank you for your time, and I look forward to continuing to get your feedback on this.
Okay. After our approval, where do you go with this?
So after your approval, and I should be specific, what we need the Board of Ed's approval on is we need your acceptance of the power purchase agreement rates, and we need your acceptance of the concept designs, which Mr. Morabito is holding. The Board of Selectmen will be the ones approving the power purchase agreement, the legal document. The other key step we need to do before we get to that is we need to go through the planning and zoning review. We've initiated that. That will go in parallel with your review and approval, and we'll then go to the Board of Selectmen for the final.
If I could ask, Mr. Morabito, it was my understanding that the purchasing department of the town bids the oil and gas and electric rate structures, not the Board of Ed. Is that, is that correct, or am I wrong?
That's correct.
So wouldn't it be the Board of Selectmen that approved the rate structure? Because we don't do that.
We wouldn't, yeah, that, I believe that's a misstatement. You're not approving the rate, you're approving the concept.
Yes, right. Okay.
I defer to Mr. Dwyer.
And the reason I clarify that is because our board does not think we're in a position to approve all the technical details, all the contractual, all the financial, all the planning and zoning type of issues that might come up. There are other town bodies that review that. I think our question is, do we approve the concept of solar, and do we believe it will have any negative impact on the educational environment? And in fact, will it have a positive impact in some respects? And so I just want you to know that we think our approval is related to that, and the resolution that will be in front of us in May will reflect that we're approving it from that concept, not all of the individual details that are in your very well-developed proposal.
Okay.
With having said that, any comments or questions from the board? I'm going to go to Mrs. Gerber first.
Thank you.
No, no, we've got to spread the wealth.
Thank you very much. This is an incredibly thorough presentation. I really appreciate, and you've actually answered a lot of questions that I had. One thing I just wanted to bring up, because I do have a high schooler, and I have driven through the Ludlow parking lot many mornings, is my concern is students hitting the, as they're pulling in, because I've seen some pretty scary parking jobs. And I'm just concerned, so let's just say someone gets in a fender bender, they run in, they knock off their side-view mirror. How does that work? Who, who do they go to? I just, because I can see that's going to be a question. And I guess, kind of alongside of that is, I'm a Ludlow parent, and I know that you weren't able to go to the PTA meeting, but I'll say that Ludlow PT meetings, unfortunately, don't have huge attendance. So I think it would be very, very important to make sure that parents of juniors and seniors and early sophomores, because they'll be parking next year as juniors, are aware of this issue, because I just have this vision of parents not being there, their child pulling in and saying, "Oh, I hit the solar thing," and being like, "What solar thing?" So I just, and I know it's really hard to convey things, and sometimes you really have to kind of spoon-feed people things, but I would just hate to have any parent say, "I didn't even have any idea this thing existed, and my kid just knocked off their side-view mirror." So, but back to the question of how would it work if someone got in an accident?
Sure, and there's a, there's a really long answer to that. We have, we had a ton of discussion around that matter, but the short answer is, first, we will be installing, the vendor will be installing pads around the columns. So unlike how these are normally done, where there are steel columns with a concrete base, there will be pads around them, kind of like, think of when you're going in for a layup in the gym, and there's those pads at the end.
Right, yeah, yeah.
So that would kind of hopefully alleviate some of the minor scrapes, which is kind of what you get when you're turning in a tight radius, think of it in a parking garage. And probably, I would think, in many cases, even a side-view mirror. But if a kid backs up pretty hard, side-view mirror in the reverse direction, that would get, you know, and that got damaged, that would be, you know, basically a matter they would have to deal with, with their insurance.
Okay.
Right, so just like running into anything.
Right, except before we put in the solar things, that's, that wouldn't be an issue, I guess, is my thing. So, if a child is, or a student this year pulls into a spot and takes a too-broad a turn, they're not going to knock their side-view mirror off. We put in these, these solar things, and they will. So, they're getting in an accident because of something that we put in that didn't exist before. So, I guess that's, and again, I, I'm just trying to be devil's advocate here, because I could see that being a concern and an issue, and really, it's basically the only negative thing I could come up with in all of this.
Well, thank you.
So, right, but, but I just think it is something that is a valid issue, and, and I just, I just think it's important to make sure that parents and students are aware in advance and understand the ramifications of this in advance, so that there, people aren't getting surprises after they've been installed.
Yeah, yeah, and we'll continue to work with Mr. Hatsis to reach the Ludlow community. We did get a really good attendance at the Ward PTA meeting. There was probably 40 or 50 people there.
Right, but there are still hundreds of, you know, I mean, students who drive every day. So, I just think you really need to try to reach everyone, just so that, because it's going to be the one person who didn't know anything, or says they didn't know anything, who's going to have their child get in some sort of an accident.
Sure.
And I just, I'd hate to have anything negative happen as a result of this incredibly positive project.
Thank you, thank you for that. Yeah, we'll do everything we can. We're trying to be as transparent and engaging as we possibly can. So, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
This is Maxon Connelly, and then followed by Mr.
Can I just follow up on that?
Please do.
Thank you. Number one, I obviously support this project wholeheartedly. I think it's a wonderful objective for our town, and we need more solar here. The one question I have, and I don't see it on the diagram, and I know it's probably just a diagram thing, are the lights for the parking lot. Are we going to have lights underneath the solar panels?
Yes, that's right. So, where there are, there are existing lights in the parking lot, and yes, they're not shown on the rendering, but wherever the carports go, where there are existing lights, those lights would be removed. And the carports themselves have LED lighting, which will be timer-controlled. And the, one of the benefits is it provides, the LED provides better illumination, number one, and number two, it actually reduces light pollution, so the high-up lights can kind of scatter the light, whereas this is very directional, so it's, it's more secure.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Maxon Connelly.
I have a few more questions. But first of all, a couple of things, I know that was one of the things mentioned in here, was that in terms of the lighting, was that it's actually going to be better for the neighbors, because that will be so reduced. And I'd also, actually, I was going to direct to Mrs. Gerber, you know, question 22 on your frequently asked questions, exactly addressed your point regarding the cushioning pads, and that the issues would be expected to be resolved between the insurance companies. And I'm only bringing that up, because as members of the public, I just would hope they could be directed toward, you know, I don't even know if maybe just this frequently asked question, it could be excerpted out, and somehow, through the chair to Dr. Jones, possibly, if this got excerpted out and forwarded to parents as something that could address so many of their questions, it really was, this was so incredibly thorough. And this is a, obviously rhetorical question, but you are a volunteer, aren't you?
I am, yeah.
That's just astounding. You know, I was at the Ward meeting, so I saw that present, that very full presentation, and I just so wholeheartedly endorse this. And again, just to repeat some of the material that's in here, so I'm not asking so much for my sake as for the public, but in the event of damage, in the event of baseballs, which of course, this very nicely at Ward can, as you pointed out, I mean, that's the extent of the thoroughness, it actually can protect cars at Ward from the errant foul ball. In the event of weather issues, anticipating different sizes of hail, and, you know, accidents, and conveniently, see we have someone here, you know, basic maintenance, just to repeat, how much can the town and the school district be on the hook financially? Zero. That, that's all, I just wanted that repeated, the short answer of just, that everything in here, of every possibility that could cost, and in fact, you know, looking way out 20 years, if we decide to stay with this, this could really bring, you know, be a tremendous source of financial savings, even beyond these numbers.
Did your reading there?
I did.
Years 21 to 30 is, is almost, almost doubles the amount of, more than doubles the amount of savings in years 0 to 20.
And again, just for the public who didn't read this, this, we're talking millions. I mean, it's, it's just amazing. So, a couple of my other actual questions beyond the rhetorical ones. First of all, just as I recall, the blue in the renderings, that actually was decided to change that, correct? The blue roofing, what, I thought there had been a decision that that was going to be changed to be, or at least on the Ward one, to be more like the color of the school?
I think, no, the, the panels are that blue color. That, that is not changed.
Was it something else?
But the structure. This one? Okay. The profile, yeah, I guess that's a good one. So, the structure, the steel will be, the colors will match the school.
Okay, I knew something was happening with color. I thought it was a roof.
The panels will still be blue, but the steel and the frame of, that holds the panel will, will be designed to match the school, will paint it to match the school.
The school exterior, not the school colors.
Yeah, well, we could debate that, but we, yeah, the school exterior.
Okay. Also, thank you Chairman Dwyer for that question regarding the calendar. You mentioned mid-May, getting started on something. How on earth could it get through the town bodies such that that could happen? Is that a concern?
We have a timeline that's feasible, it's tight, but if you were to approve this at your May 9th meeting, we would be seeking Board of Selectmen approval at their May 16th meeting.
And it's already on the town planning and zoning agenda as well?
We've, we have submitted it to Town Planning and Zoning for review. We're waiting their determination. Sometimes it's a staff review, sometimes it's a hearing. We think, we think we'll be having hearing on Ward, we're not sure about Ludlow yet. So, we don't know that part of the timeline yet, is the TPZ part, but we know what we're seeking from you, and then the BOS would follow.
Okay. My other question was, is that regarding Fairfield-Ludlow, how do you see this being, and this actually, I don't know through the chair if this needs to be addressed to Mr. Cullen or Mr. Morabito, but obviously, when the Board of Selectmen in their vote cut the money for the Fairfield-Ludlow High School paving, which I, again, obviously, I supported that paving project very much, I've been in their parking lot, it very badly needs to be done, but it was cut, I would have a hard, my only reservation is, how can we move ahead with this solely at Ludlow? I don't, I support it at Ward. When we know that that paving project is, you know, the can got kicked down the road, it needs to be done. And how does, how does, how could this go ahead when that paving still needs to be done?
Actually, this will have some pavement cuts that will go on to create trenches, to tie the electricity into the meter at the school. And so, the ideal situation is that the paving for the parking lot gets done in the same construction season, and we've done that at the rec center, and the two projects were dovetailed. But if, if the paving gets pushed out years after this, we've worked with DPW, Scott Bartlett, they've contacted the paving contractor, we've given them all the designs and profiles, so that they understand what they would be paving around, and it would be, they've indicated there would be no increase in cost of paving, and they would be able to work with the carports in place to do the paving that's required.
For sure.
Okay, so that this, so that that being put off, wouldn't, it should be no reason to postpone this project?
Yeah.
Okay. My other question, and obviously, you were there, but one thing that I thought was nice to mention, if anyone's looking on pay, it's at, with question 16 regarding the electrical vehicle charging, is that I appreciated that worked in here was what the Board of Ed had amended as language, in terms of the idea that this will be for student use, on a timer restricted to school hours for student use only, the amendment originating with Mr. Llewellyn. So, I appreciate that that language was maintained. I don't recall, and I don't know if other board members do, what was the nature of the Board of Finance's objection to this, and?
I answered their objection, too. Their objection was that there was no mechanism to be able to recover the cost of the electricity associated with the EVs charging. And this was actually Mr. Llewellyn's input, which was, I was grateful for, was, he said I should, you know, give a calculation for what that would be, and, and propose what a possible fee would be for EV charging, if and when there was a point where it was becoming very common. If you have one or two cars, you're probably going to let them charge, and it costs, you know, maximum $150 a year. But if you start getting more and more cars, you can add a EV charging permit fee that would recoup some or all of that cost.
Okay, thank you. And I think?
And that was the Board of Finance's objection.
Right, right. And then finally, my final question, again, I'm not sure if this is appropriate to you or through the chair to Dr. Jones, and I had asked this at the last meeting, when we were talking about the budgeting issue. Is this something that we can officially start factoring in as we look to figure out that $2.3 million cut? You had alluded to, it was more complicated than, I mean, the charting here clearly, you know, points to a dollar figure. Do you find that that's a dollar figure that we're going to be able to work with? Or can you, you know, explain any further what the issue there might be?
And I would actually defer really to even Mr. Cullen, who deals with the utility side. I'm always, I'm always nervous to include anything before it's done, because goodness knows, you start to do construction in the summer, and something happens that halts it, or you just, until it's actually there and we have it, but?
Yeah, what we call it is, we'd say, when the system goes live.
Right.
So, the carports have to get installed, the solar photovoltaic cells and panels have to be installed, there's a lot of electrical work tying into the building, and then the actual contractor picks a date and tells us, "We're going live on blank date." From that date, we have to prepare and figure what our savings will be in that fiscal year, and then after one year, we like to capture all of the savings to move forward and, and work with our utilities.
Well, just as a follow-up to that, and I'm looking at the, and this, I apologize, the page numbers are not numbered here, this one regarding the 20-year electricity savings with a 0% escalation, it was looking at 1.2, now that's obviously overall, no?
Yes, yeah, that's the lifetimes.
And I, I can't find the page now, yes, I did read, I can't remember the page I'd had, the one that was for per-year, annual?
That's 75, isn't it? Right around 75 for both schools.
Yeah, close to that.
So, yeah, if you go back to page 26, it gives you savings in Exhibit C, that's And then page 34 is the Ludlow savings.
And what would be the anticipated go-live date for this project? Knowing that something always goes wrong, but the anticipated go-live date?
Well, we're really constrained by the school construction season, and so, we want to have the construction done during the summer.
Right.
And it's a 10-week window that we need. I'm going to defer that question to Sam, because he'll have a better sense for how long it takes to go live after construction is done.
And if you would state your name.
Hi, I'm Sam Wahab from Davis Hill Development and Skyview Ventures. We're the vendor here. We've built, I think, about 15 projects for the town, including two for the schools, and we have another planned later this year for Woods Middle. The construction, not, we should have no problem building the carport itself, certainly in the summer, the panels should be on there, and I would say the majority, if not all of the electrical work, is expected to be done by the end of August. There may be some, what we call, non-invasive work, you know, setting of the timers of the lights and things like that, that won't affect parking spots or make noise, that'll affect children during school hours. We would expect, assuming we're done by the end of August, given the utilities' typical timeline to approve things, and actually give us the all-clear to turn on, by mid-September or end of September at the latest, we would expect it to be turned, what they call approval to energize. And that's when you would start to see savings.
So, go live as of the end of the month of September?
Yes.
Okay, well, I just, way in advance, I know I would request some estimate, if staff could do, if Mr. Cullen can do, to factor that into our May budget discussion. I just, I completely get, you want a known number, I definitely get that, but with the things that we're looking at having to do to our budget, I just, even estimating really, really low, I'd love the staff to have some kind of numbers ready for us to have as part of our conversation.
Yep, we can do that.
I probably should add that the two schools that we built the previous summer, that were both significantly completed by the end of August, were both energized either third week of September or the last week of September. So, that's kind of where we get those numbers from.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything further? Mrs. Pitko, followed by Mrs. Gerber.
I'm a science teacher. I teach high school biology, in case you didn't know. And actually, ironically, I'm teaching renewable resources right now. Six degrees could change the world. Jennifer asked most of my questions, and when I first got this, and thank you to Mary Hoag for offering to go over this with me, all of my questions, for the most part, were answered. This is very thorough, thank you very much. My biggest thought right away was school security. And number 27, you answered it. And not to go into how the Fairfield Police Department handles our school security, I was happy to hear that you'd also talked to the high school principals and included them in this conversation, because having been at both schools on multiple floors, looking down into the parking lot, your first feeling would be the safety of our students, and where would the security cameras be to see them? And thankfully, that's in here, too. So, thank you.
I have to say, Mr. Hatsis' input on that was very, very valuable, and we ended up, we changed the design because of his input there, and we came up with a better project because of it. So, I'm really grateful for his wisdom on that.
Thank you. Mrs. Gerber.
I'm also the liaison to the Ludlow Building Committee, and I'm sure you know that they're going to be installing windows all this summer. How will, because there's obviously going to be a lot of construction going on there related to the windows. So, how, will you be able to negotiate around that and be able to have both projects done? Because the first day of school is August 31st. So, I just want to put out there that, that would be my concern with Ludlow, is that you do have that additional. I know there is some summer work going on at Ward, but not as extensive as the windows.
At Ludlow, I've, I've spoken with Gilbane. They're aware of the possibility of this project. There are options. They had done a logistic plan on the first go-around, as was just explained, the design has changed. They'll play with the flow, and we'll get our containers where we'll, as close to the work as possible.
Okay.
And make sure everybody plays together nice.
Okay, great. Yeah, I just knew that would be a question that would come up, so, thank you.
Just for the developers' knowledge, in case you don't know, some of our Ludlow parents were promised windows when their children were in seventh grade, and now their children have graduated from college. So, we would hope that nothing would get in the way of getting a completed windows project for the high school, because a lot of people in this community have been looking for that for years, just so that you know.
Sal has made me very aware of that situation, to say the least.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Okay, so this will be an action item for the first meeting in May, as you and I have talked about. I don't think we'll need any additional presentation, but you should make yourself available, should there be questions.
Okay, thank you, and thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are up to first reading of policies.
I'll simply say, as always, I welcome questions in advance of the next meeting. I don't know if anyone is looking them over now has questions. Please note, front and back, you've got the one that we're voting on, as well as the previous one. So, if there are any questions now, great. Otherwise, if I could have them in advance of the next meeting, I'd appreciate it.
Any questions instantly for these two policies? Seeing none, so these will be put on for action at the first meeting in March. For the public's knowledge that, yes, Mr. Calvary's left for a few moments, it left us without a quorum, we're allowed to continue discussion, just not take any action. So, now that Mr. Calvary's is back, we will move on to the action item that is next, item nine, and the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the special meeting of March 16, 2017. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Mrs. Maxon Connelly. Any questions from the board on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor, please raise your hand. Unanimous with the five members present. Thank you very much. Superintendent's report.
Given that it's after 10, I will be quick, but I do want to just say, congratulations to our middle schools, who had great performances last week. I was at Annie on Friday night, and it was just fabulous. Also, this was the 10th year for McKinley to have their drama production, and so, they actually did the same play that they, or the same musical they had done the very first year, which was Charlotte's Web, and that was fabulous on last Friday morning. And I had the opportunity yesterday to be at the Dwight.
And I had the opportunity yesterday to be at the Dwight PTA meeting, which they had a fantastic turnout, and quite a few questions about the structural change conversation that is happening in town, and I think that's probably why there was such a big turnout, just some of the issues that are real important to them right now. And just last but not least, I'll mention with the calendar, we will send something out, you know, district-wide tomorrow to get, help everybody get the answer to those questions, and then also an explanation to McKinley why we have these two days. And then just, you know, thank you to the Family Consumer Science team. I know when they did the first presentation for me, it was actually here in the office, but it was just fantastic, and I have told so many people just in different conversations about what's happening here with that whole component, because it is very, very unique, and I just, I was very impressed. I think you probably were tonight too, just watching it, but I hadn't really seen it, so it was a great learning opportunity for me just about the district. Thank you.
Any comments on the budget, did you want to?
Oh, just on the budget? Oh, that little thing. I was going to have a night where I didn't think about it for a minute. Actually, you know, I'm very grateful where we are today compared to where we were a month ago, and because we, the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance did vote to put back in that $2 million, the original reduction, which I shared with the RTM last night, was $2,033,000, so it's all been restored with the exception of the 33, and I think that was just easier to have the whole number as they were restoring the budget. We are still watching the excess costs, we are still watching those special education components, that, they're big numbers, and so up until we really get into June and July, and we know what's happening at the state level, we are going to have to be very conservative, even when we've approved our budget, because we couldn't afford all of a sudden finding a couple million dollars, trying to cut that out in September. So it's going to make challenging going into the year. I spent part of the afternoon just going through the Tier One, about what are the things you can freeze, because, you know, some of those things in Tier One and Tier Two are programmatic, so those decisions have to be made now, you can't make those decisions in September. So just trying to calculate what are the things that we really can be very conservative about, because we can't assume, for instance, Mr. Cullen has quite a few projects on that Tier One, so if we do all of those this summer, we have spent all that money, and generally, many of those projects, he would probably want to do this summer. So we still have quite a few conversations, and we'll be watching closely at the state.
For those who follow the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen, you know that the $2 million was a positive news for us, but at the Board of Selectmen level, several town departments had individual line items removed from the budget. Without going into the detail of what they did, when it got to the Board of Finance, by that time, the Board of Finance had heard that the state certainly is not going to transfer $9 million of pension costs to the town of Fairfield as part of their $400 million transfer, but that some members of the legislature might consider a partial transfer of expenses. So the Board of Finance more or less looked at some of the items that the Board of Selectmen had cut, not all of them, some of them, and then decided that they would add money to the contingency, about $1 million one, give or take, so that they would hedge against, if the legislator does go down that direction, they've got a head start toward that concern, and if not, they would have funds available to perhaps restore some of the town departments. And so the town departments at the moment are still cut, and the process would be that the first selectman, once the dust settles for the state budget, would then be in a position to make a recommendation to the Board of Finance, who has the approval authority to spend contingency dollars. And, and so if you hear what happened at those two boards, there is money that might help restore the library and dump trucks and paving and things of that nature. So I think the Board of Finance took an appropriate action. We're all waiting on the state, and who knows what's going to happen there. And it, it should not go without notice that, boy, we think we're doing okay, we still have to cut 2.35 million. That is not an easy task from a tight budget, so we do have our work cut out for us in May and June. Any questions for the superintendent on her comment, her report? Mrs. Maxon Canelli?
Just for the benefit of the public, I think it's helpful to know, because we all, you know, many of us have rallied the public behind this budget effort, and of course, there is in fact one more last hurdle to, to pass, which is the RTM vote, and that they did meet last night, and this would be a very quick summary, I was hoping you could just update, for the sake of the public, what happened last night.
Well, the RTM, actually, I, I think in comparison to previous years, although I wasn't here, based on what I have, I understand, they have really watched and paid attention this year to the other presentations at Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen, where they were listening to the questions and the answers. So last night, they actually felt that they didn't need to have the whole presentation from the superintendent, and I was able just to update them on the difference from March to April, and several of them had reached out over the last few weeks. I had several RTM members that came and met with me on different occasions, just to make sure they understood our budget, and I think that's why last night, they didn't have as many questions. They had really done a lot of work before last evening, so it was, I felt like it was a very, it was a quick evening compared to what I thought it would have been.
Thank you.
Yes, one member of the RTM walked in just as they were pounding the gavel to adjourn, so the meeting went fairly quick. If there are no other questions for the superintendent's report, committee liaison reports, does anybody have any committee liaison reports?
Someone does.
You're at your limit, Mrs. Maxon Canelli.
I was at, hoping somebody else would.
Mrs. Pitko, and then followed by Mrs. Maxon Canelli.
Being the liaison for SEPTA, they had their fundraiser this past Saturday night, and many of us were there. It was a wonderful event, and I know right now they're looking to raise funds, maybe try to offset some of the things that we might not put in our budget, so I just want to thank everyone in SEPTA who did such an amazing night. It was wonderful. And for the staff who came out too, that was even, that was even more wonderful, and bid.
Mrs. Maxon Canelli?
Just, we're coming up on a time where we recognize members of the public who are active with PTA, and so for PTA Council, I just wanted to put out a quick plug for anyone paying attention, staff members, board members, that there are four awards that will be given out in June through PTA Council. There are the Brian Fagan Grant Awards, which recognize and reward outstanding teachers in our schools who are currently enrolled in a graduate program in educational administration. There's the Alice B. McGrath Friend of Education Award, given to a person committed to excellence in our public school, who has demonstrated leadership through active involvement through, in the community at large, not just the schools. The Deanna O'Kearney Award, which is given to an individual who is active in promoting public education, the PTA and its mission. And finally, a new award, just inaugurated last year, Mary Hoag mentioned at this meeting was the initial recipient of that award. The Tricia Ford Money Award, given to an individual who demonstrates an exemplary commitment to a single program or initiative that positively impacts Fairfield children in the community. It's a wonderful awards night, just so positive, recognizing the work of our volunteers, and so that those awards are coming up for anyone to start considering people that they might like to nominate. So, thank you.
Any other committee liaison reports? Seeing none, on to open board comment, any comment from, yeah, any comment from the board on open comment, please?
I was very fortunate to go to the townwide band concert, even though I don't have a student at the high school, and it was beautiful, absolutely wonderful, and even the faculty got up and, and they did a Michael Jackson song. I also wanted to extend my apologies to Tomlinson and McKinley, they were so gracious and invited me to come to their performances. Unfortunately, I had tickets to the Fairfield Museum that I had purchased in advance, and then the SEPTA night, and oh my God, it gets crazy, so it was, I read everything on Facebook, it was amazing. I hope everybody had fun.
Thank you. I continue on open, open board comment. I continue to encourage principals and other staff to invite board members to everything, knowing that if you tried to go to everything, it would be impossible, but I think it's important for board members to at least be invited and able to get to one or two or three or four, however many events that you can, so if you start seeing more and more invitations, you can blame me. Make your own choice as to what fits into your family and personal schedule. Any other comments under open board comment? Having none, out to the public, we've added this to the agenda, any member of the board, public that wishes to make a comment on an agenda item that we've talked about, now that you've heard our discussion, may step forward, unless of course you've spoken in the past on that item. Could you state your name and address, just in case there's somebody that doesn't know you?
Somebody doesn't, I've been, been mentioned so many times. Mary Hoag, I-165 Stonewall Lane in Fairfield, and mentioned a couple of times. I wanted to just talk about the solar carports, and I especially wanted to echo the comments you guys made about the FAQ listing that Scott put together. But I'd also like to thank the principals at the high schools and Sal Morabito. They were very involved, took a lot of their time, and I appreciate that they have a full-time job being principals, but they were very thoughtful, very engaged, really worked very hard to think through everything, and, and I think that it speaks volumes for how important they felt it was to make sure that the safety and security of the students and the, the whole environment was addressed. Scott really is very interested in, in solar, but he's also interested in, in the, the educational aspects of it, he's interested in how it can save our town money, and so I think that there were so many back and forth, and I think that the presentation is as thorough as it is, is because there was so much involvement. So I just wanted to let you all know how, how much involvement there was, and I wanted to say thank you to all those people involved.
Thank you very much. Before we adjourn, I just make note of the calendar of events. April 25 is our normal, required by the bylaw, self-evaluation meeting. It is scheduled for the special meeting at 6:00 PM for an hour, and then the town hall forum will be scheduled for 8:00 PM. The subject, agenda item will essentially be any program finance or, program finance or facility issue that may be on the minds of, of the board, of the public, so there'll be a lot of variety of topics that we may have, and will hold of course in this room, and then of course we'll move on to our next meeting, so please get to the 6:00 PM-
Self-evaluation.
Self-evaluation meeting, and, and stay for the town hall meeting.
Just wanted to clarify, at 8 o'clock will be the start of the town hall meeting?
No, that's, should say 7.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Thank you for catching that. Well, let's make sure that we get publicity out, that it's 6 for the special meeting and 7 for the town hall meeting. With that said, the recommended motion for adjournment is that this regular meeting of the Board of Education adjourn, Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Ms. Pitko, all in favor? Unanimous with the five members present. Thank you very much.
Well, Mr. Calabrese.